Good evening, everyone. And welcome. The regular board meeting of the trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Tuesday, October 17th. The time is now 7:01 PM. Trustees present are Trustee Adams, Trustee Correa, Trustee Hodges, Trustee Durant, Trustee Jensen, and Trustee McDaniel. I would like to ask everyone to turn off or silence your cellphones or any electronic devices. At this time, our Board Vice President and Board Equity Committee Lead Winfred Adams Jr. will begin the meeting by reading the Spring ISD Equity Statement.
Thank you, Madam President. "Spring Independent School District strongly believes in educational and racial equity as fundamental aspects of its core mission and purpose, embodied through any program, practice, decision, or action that affects all students, with a strategic focus on those choices and policies that most strongly impact marginalized students. We believe all students, regardless of their ability, ethnicity, language, race, religion, gender identity, and status, should have equitable access to opportunities, resources, support systems, and educational rigor in order to maximize their academic success and social emotional well-being. We believe every Spring Independent School District student is valuable and possesses individual strengths and characteristics that make our district a great place to learn and grow. Moreover, we seek to act on that belief, instituting policies and practices that value diversity, committing ourselves as a district to continued growth and development, and working to support the success of every student in all that we do."
Thank you, Trustee Adams. Tonight's presentation of colors will be led by the Decane Wildcats Naval JROTC Battalion. The pledges will be led by Cadet Commander Ruth Delgado. The color guard commander carrying the U.S. flag is Cadet Lieutenant Commander Daisy Elcoro. Carrying the Texas flag is Command Master Chief Gabriela Lopez. Left rifle is Petty Officer Third Class Christopher Zatino. Right raffle is Lieutenant Angelo Lazzata. The Decane Wildcats NJROTC Battalion is led by Chief Victor Adams and Chief Robert Dunn. At this time, would everyone please rise? Up, march! One, two, three, cut! Ready, cut! Forward, march! Up, march! On, march! Hold! On, march! March! On, march! Hold! Present! Colors! I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and not for the weak. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, and one indivisible. Carries! Colors! Ready, cut! On, march! Face! Forward, march! Color guard! Hold! Hold, the colors! Hand, salute! Ready, two! In, march! Face! Forward, march! On, march! Hold! On, march! Face! Right, face! Forward, march! If you can please remain standing. At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to be observed in your own way. Thank you, you may be seated. Our next item on tonight's agenda is our superintendent remarks. And so we'll now hear from our super proud superintendent, Dr. Lapita Inahosa.
Thank you, President Durant and members of the board. Everyone that is here tonight, bienvenidos. It's so good to see so many, first and foremost, students that are here and then their parents that are accompanying them, family members, and of course, lots of staff, administrators, principals that are here. Just welcome, welcome to Spring ISD. This is who we are. We're a family and it feels so good today. I just want to give some real quick updates. First and foremost, I would like to highlight a wonderful program that will benefit our students, especially around literacy. Thanks to the efforts of our Spring ISD AFT organization and its partnership with the Reading Opens the World program, the AFT will be receiving 40,000 books. Forty thousand books! I mean, like, yes, I see Ms. McDaniel clapping. Absolutely. Forty thousand books and a $10,000 first book marketplace credit to select and purchase books for our students. We know that this generous donation will serve to spread the joy of reading and support our students and educators in their journey of literacy. Even more so, we are so excited to share that these books will be distributed during our annual Winter Wonderland event, which is being held on December 8th this year. So get ready. Remember, December 8th, we will see you at Planet Ford for our Winter Wonderland. So just once again, thank you to the AFT and the Reading Opens the World organization for bringing this wonderful opportunity to Spring ISD. I hear you, I see Ms. Merritt back there. Thank you so very much. I mean, you think about forty thousand books. I mean, that is amazing. So we appreciate the great donation and contribution. And we know at the end of the day, these will be books, free books, in our students' hands. So it continues to focus on literacy that we have here in Spring ISD. I also want to remind everyone, and if you've been following us on Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, and guess what, I joined Facebook. So I'm still trying to learn how to do it. So if y'all are out there and I haven't posted, just know I'm trying to learn. But you'll see it on Facebook, you see it on all of our social media channels. This is National School Lunch Week. And I want to give just a big shout out to our child nutrition team. Our child nutrition department works incredibly hard to ensure that our students are fed nutritious meals every single day to support their healthy minds and optimal learning. So please take a moment to thank our cafeteria personnel working at our campuses. And I see lots of students that are here. So make sure you all stop by this rest of the week and say thank you to our cafeteria workers that are out there supporting you as students every single day. Next, it's a week away. Our annual Tea Up for Education, it's our golf tournament, our annual charity golf tournament. And it will be held next Monday, October 23rd. And this is sponsored through our Spring ISD Education Foundation. The event will be held right down the street at the Northgate Country Club Course. And of course, we are raising money to support our Spring ISD initiatives. So I went out there yesterday to see the students. Our Decane, Westfield, and Spring High School golf students were out there. I don't know if we can do anything because I haven't practiced. But we will be out there and know that there's still opportunity for you to sign up. So I encourage you to come out and support our Spring ISD Education Foundation and just have lots of fun. So you can go to, you can sign up through the Education Foundation website, And then last but not least, Mr. Ant and members of the board, you all know, last time we were here, we approved two new leaders in our district. And so I'd like to take the time to introduce these two new members to our team, Spring. And I want to start off with, first and foremost, Mr. Jason Davila. He has been named as the Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools in Feeder 1. Mr. Davila, go ahead and come up. And I just want to share with you, Mr. Davila comes to us from Houston, where he has led principals for 12 campuses, serving over 7,000 students. And in that role, he developed effective strategies for improving student performance and ensuring that each school met or exceeded the academic goals and student achievement benchmarks. Mr. Davila began as a teacher at Texas Serenity Academy in Fort Ben ISD. He then went on to serve as an assistant principal and principal both in Houston and Crosby. He earned his Bachelor's of Management Studies from the University of Houston and his Master's of Education Administration from Lamar University. Mr. Davila, welcome to Spring ISD. Would you like to share a few words?
For sure. So thank you so much, Dr. Inahosa. Thank you for believing in me and giving me this opportunity. Trustees, it's an honor to be here tonight. I'm so excited to jump in this work and start working with our principals and our kids and just be a part of this family. Spring is doing some amazing things. So I was so ecstatic when I found out I was going to be a part of the team. I've been in education, as Dr. Inahosa said, for quite some time. I've seen a lot of different things. But one thing that's always gotten me through is strong relationships, empowering one another, and working as a team. We win as a team, right, Dr. Inahosa? So I love the motto, I love the strategic vision. I'm so looking forward to being a part of this work. Very humbled to be here tonight. I cannot wait for next Monday, that is my official start date. So I'm excited for the 23rd and look forward to amazing things and working together as a family.
You're welcome. Thank you. And next, I want to introduce Ms. Norma Lim. And she's been named as the Assistant Superintendent for Middle Schools. Ms. Lim comes to us from Houston, where she most recently oversaw principals at five campuses, including two specialty high schools, two priority middle schools, and one priority high school. Previously, she supported 16 comprehensive and specialty schools in Houston. She has over 20 years of public education experience. Ms. Lim previously served in principal and administrator roles at the high school, middle school, and elementary school levels. She earned her Bachelor's of Science in Psychology from the University of Houston, go Cougs! And the Master's of Education Administration from Sam Houston State University. She is currently working on her doctorate in Public School Administration from Texas A&amp;M University. Welcome, Ms. Lim.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Inahosa. Thank you so much, trustees, for giving me this opportunity. And thank you, I look forward also to working with our students, our staff, our community. I'm just so excited to start on the 23rd. Like Dr. Inahosa said, I've been in education for 20 years. I've had the great opportunity to serve at the elementary, middle, and high school level. And at each level, you bring a new perspective with you. As you lay the foundation in elementary school, you continue to support our students in middle school. And as you prepare them in high school for post-secondary readiness. I look forward, and I'm ready, the 23rd, to support our principals, to be a thought partner, collaborating with our principals. I'm ready just to support them. I just can't wait to get started in the work. Like Assistant Superintendent Davila said, we win as a team. And I truly believe in leading by example. And I can't, you know, I can't wait to start to serve my nine principals. So I'm so excited. Again, thank y'all so much for giving me this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to Spring, Mr. Davila, Ms. Lim. Welcome to Spring ISD, welcome to our family. Mr. Ant, that concludes my shout-outs and excitement.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Inahosa. And we're really excited and welcome to the team, to both of you. So our next item, I'd like to ask if any of the trustees would like to make any remarks this evening.
I have a couple of things. One, I had the opportunity to attend the regionals for UIL marching band. This past weekend, all three of our schools will be moving on. I want to congratulate the students that participate in those bands, the band directors that do all the hard work, and Dr. Clark for really supporting the arts. There are a couple of performances coming up. Westfield has a show coming up, there's a concert happening at Spring. And I encourage the community to come out to those events and support the kids. And I had one more thing. I just, I lost it, so maybe I'll get it back later.
Okay. Thank you. I'd just like to comment, this morning, Dr. Jensen and I, along with Dr. Inahosa and the parasol still has one of his flower, we attended the 45th anniversary at Hirsch Elementary. And it was just amazing to see the enthusiasm of the kids, the number of former teachers and administrators that came back to celebrate with us. The fourth grade choir did three rousing performances. The last one to a really nice steady beat that got everybody moving. But one of the things that I admire most is Ms. Patterson, who's the principal. She is a product of Hirsch. She went to Hirsch and now she's leading Hirsch. And that made me really proud to see how many people came back to support them and to see how enthusiastic our kids were and how we continue to grow in Spring ISD so that their futures can soar. So it was an amazing event. So congratulations to Hirsch on their 45 years.
President Durant, I did recall the last thing I had. So earlier today, I went out to Spring High School to meet my Vine mentor. It's our second meeting. There's a Vine mentoring event happening this Thursday over at the Community Center. And I want to encourage the community to come out and, you know, mentor the kids. We talk about it takes a village, and that's actually putting your money where your mouth is. And so while I was out there, the Spring High School kids were doing a performance of Susico the Musical for some kids from Anderson Elementary. So again, I'm going to go and see that show coming up this weekend. But that was my thing, is that I want to encourage people to sign up to become a mentor for a student in Spring ISD.
Thank you, Trustee Adams. So at this time, I'd like to ask the board and Dr. Inahosa to join me in the horseshoe so that we can do one of my favorite parts of the meeting, and that's Points of Pride.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam President, trustees, Dr. Inahosa, everyone here in attendance and watching online. Our first recognition item this evening is a Point of Pride honoring a very special group of Spring ISD high school students who have been named National Recognition Program Scholars for 2023 by the College Board. And a testament to the amazing diversity that our district represents, this year's 47 College Board honorees from Spring ISD include National African-American Recognition Program Scholars, National Hispanic Recognition Program Scholars, and National Indigenous Recognition Program Scholars, all eligible for the award based on their strong GPA and their high PSAT and AP scores. Again, 47 honorees. That's a 47% increase from last year. And that's the highest that Spring has ever achieved. Let's give that a round of applause. To qualify for this national award, students must have a 3.5 GPA or higher and identify as Black, African-American, Latino, Hispanic, Indigenous, Native, or attend high school in a rural area or small town. In addition, they must either have PSAT-NMSQT or PSAT-10 scores that put them in the top 10% in the state or earn a score of three or higher on two or more AP exams by their junior year. Pretty complicated formula is there. In addition to honoring students' outstanding accomplishments, the program also creates additional pathways to college. Students can include the award on college and scholarship applications. And colleges around the country use the list of College Board honorees in order to identify high potential students from underrepresented groups and communities. This award is a testament to their hard work, combined with support from committed teachers, counselors, campus principals, and other members of the Spring ISD team who have encouraged them to strive for success. Congratulations to each and every one of our 2023 College Board National Recognition Program Scholars on this awesome award. Now, I'm going to call the students up. I would have to say that many of the students are either working or in extracurricular activities, so several of them could not be with us tonight. But we do have quite a few here. And so from beginning with Decane High School, we have Caleb Freeman. Yasmin Ramirez. Janaya Morris. Alyssa Brown. Gabriel Gomez. Gabriela Albezuri. Kelly Garcia. Lauren Hogan. Reagan Hardy. Sara Mario Alvarado. Callie Griffin. Daniel Deloza. Amina Adams. April Acevero. Fernando Carino. Jacob Latta. Jennifer Morira. Rayona Guidry. Adjo To诺. Angel Gutierrez. Angelica Jackson. Christopher Imbuegu. Colin King. And Colin's mom, I believe, is here to receive her. Colin's mom? Or dad?
Mom or dad?
That's dad? All right. Cruz Montoya. David Diaz. Jeremiah Lindsay. Kina Nash. Kendra Perez. Luis Ramirez. Maximus Campos Reina. And Melanie Villarreal. Are there any students that arrived a little bit later we might have missed? All right, let's give our students another round of applause. Ronnie, you got it? Yeah, parents, come on up. Just don't get in front of Ronnie though. Just don't get in front of Ronnie though. Everyone look at the big camera first. Everyone look at the big camera. Alright, I'm good. Alright, parents. Okay, our next recognition item this evening is a point of pride honoring not one, but two of our outstanding high schools. At this time, I'd like to call Spring Early College Academy Principal Christine Guidry and Dr. Alfred James, Principal of Carl Winchey Senior High School, to join me at the podium. And joining them as well is gonna be some of their student ambassadors. We're celebrating with them tonight because both of these incredible campuses were recently listed in the U.S. News and World Report 2023-24 Best High Schools National Rankings. Both campuses were listed among the top fifteen percent of ranked schools nationally, with Spring Early College Academy ranking approximately in the top three percent and making it yes. The U.S. News and the U.S. News Best High Schools Rankings include data on nearly twenty-five thousand public high schools in fifty states and the District of Columbia. Nearly eighteen thousand schools were ranked in factors related to their performance on state assessments as well as how effectively they prepare students for college. This year's rankings showcase schools across the nation whose students demonstrate outstanding outcomes and surpass anticipated benchmarks, including achieving high graduation rates. In the Texas Rankings, Spring Early College Academy was ranked number seventy-two in the state of Texas. And Winchey came in high as well, earning the 224 spot statewide. Let's give them both a round of applause. And the icing on the cake? Both of these campuses boasted one-hundred percent graduation rates in the rankings. Now, neither of these schools is a stranger to accolades, and we get to witness every day how the work on these campuses shapes and transforms students' lives and equips them for success. Seeing them also recognized on the national level is especially gratifying. Congratulations to Ms. Guidry and Dr. James, as well as to the amazing faculty, students, and staff at both of your schools on this incredible achievement. Oh, were y'all in the, some of y'all in the recognitions earlier?
I'd like to invite any parents here for students to stand up and recognize at the sign again.
Alright guys. There you go. Ready, one, two, three? Give me one more second. One, two, three. Last one? That's good.
Hi, my name is Hannah.
My name is Iman.
And we just really wanna thank the district and our school for giving all the opportunities that we have been blessed with. Without the school, I don't know how far I would have gotten, just like everything that our principal and all the teachers and staff at Winchey helped me with. I'm very grateful for it.
I wanna say thank you to everyone, our district, our principal, and all the teachers at our schools for supporting us with everything they've taught us, especially in our pathways, all the hands-on things that we do in our daily classes. The certifications have been really beneficial to my learning experience.
I'd like to say thank you as well to my principal, Ms. Guidry. You know, she's a really good principal for us over there at Spring Early College. And I'm sure the principal over there at Winchey is just as good. And I'd like to thank everybody at Spring ISD. I know how hard you guys all work to give us a good education. I'd like to thank you guys for that.
Okay, alright. Next up, this evening, we're celebrating National Dyslexia Awareness Month by recognizing our Spring ISD dyslexia teachers for the great work they do to advance the learning of students who require dyslexia support and related services. At this time, I'd like to invite our Executive Director of Special Education, Dr. Lisa Edwards, to the podium to let us know a little bit more about the Dyslexia Awareness Month and about the incredible educators in Spring ISD who offer support and hope to students with dyslexia. Dr. Edwards?
Good evening, Board President Durant, Board of Trustees, President, or sorry, maybe that's a prophecy, Superintendent Dr. Hannah Hossa, and senior leadership team and guests. We are so excited to be able to celebrate and recognize October as our Dyslexia Awareness Month. It's a national event. And across the country, just like Spring ISD, all of the students and folks that have dyslexia are being celebrated. And there's an awareness outlined and identified regarding dyslexia as a condition. I'm not sure if you're aware, but it is one of the most common language deficits and base, learning-based disabilities in America and in the world. And so, this month, our teachers and our educators and our students are working collectively to raise awareness about dyslexia. And one thing that's really excited, exciting about Dyslexia Awareness Month is that we and Spring ISD are also doing a lot of work based on the research to ensure that dyslexia awareness has early identification and intervention strategies. So, really excited to present and welcome as a representative of our teacher group four of our dyslexia teachers out of our twenty, some who actually decided to harp pool, had a battery issue, and so they're unable to join us. But we're excited to be able to bring them up and be able to honor and celebrate them this month. The one thing that we do want to recognize is that as teachers that are specializing in dyslexia, they are working with certain certificates and licenses that is very unique to the work that students with dyslexia require in order to advance their academic pursuits. So, with that being said, I'd like to ask if we could bring our four teachers up, including our Dyslexia Clerk and our Coordinator of Dyslexia and 504. And some of our dyslexia teachers have assumed and earned a dyslexia therapist account. And so, we're excited about that. And so, we have Laura Omalonzik, Margaret Fritz, Teresa Ledger, and Sarita Ray, and then our Dyslexia Clerk Lucia Gill, and our Coordinator Ty Bailey.
Yeah, that's good. Alright guys, ready, one, two, and three? Last one. Alright.
Alright, so I have the honor on the last recognition. So, October is also when we get to celebrate National Principals Month and shine a spotlight on the transformative power of our school principals. With their resolute vision and their unwavering dedication, these leaders aren't just running schools or managing employees. They're molding futures, shaping communities, and laying out pathways to the success of our, for our scholars across Spring ISD. The role of a principal goes far beyond administrative duties. Their leadership has a deep-seated impact on the very heart of education and supports effective teaching and classroom learning. Their influence radiates outwards as well, touching all aspects of the school of a school and a significantly influencing student outcomes. It's impossible to overstate the importance of the role principals play in building campus culture, nurturing and growing their staffs, establishing the expectations of excellence for students, and also representing the campus in the community. I think we saw a perfect example this morning with Ms. Patterson out at Hirsch Elementary. It is a big job, a tough job, but also an incredibly important one. And our schools would not be able to function without the foundation that our principals provide every single day. Our principals are appreciated each and every day here in Spring, but October is a special month. And when we get to celebrate our campus leaders and show them just how much we value and admire them. So, I'm so very proud of our amazing principals, and I hope our whole Spring ISD community will join me this month especially, but always, in thanking them for all that they do. And so, our board took a special time out of their day to create a very special message for our principals. And we know they were all here last week, but I wanna say thank you to all of you for taking that time. So, at this time, we are going to kick off, and no one has seen this video, but we're gonna kick off this one with a short video message to our Spring ISD principals from our Board of Trustees. And just thank you once again and congratulations to our principals this month and always.
Hi, I'm Justine Durant, President of the Spring ISD Board of Trustees. And I am so honored to be here today to have an opportunity to recognize our principals in Spring ISD. They are the backbone, the engine that makes it work here in our district. I'd like to congratulate them for the support that they give to every student, every teacher, every single day.
I want to extend my gratitude and appreciation to our building principals. We talk all the time about the importance of the teacher and student interaction and the relationships, but it's also really important that we key in on what leadership is happening across our systems. And again, I wanna extend my gratitude to all of our principals in the Spring ISD system. Thank you.
This time of the year, we celebrate you, principals, for all of your hard work and dedication to our scholars, for your early mornings, no lunches, long evenings, supporting our community, supporting our parents, and supporting our district.
As a former principal, I know and understand the importance of your role. I know that it is important for you to communicate with your students, your teachers, your parents, and your community. And you do just that. You are simply the best.
We appreciate the work you do so much. You are the instructional leaders in our schools. You're the key communicators who talk to our students, our staff, and our parents and keep everything rolling smoothly along. You are the instructional leaders in our schools. You're the key communicators who talk to our students, our staff, and our parents and keep everything rolling smoothly along. You are also the ones who keep our schools safe in an emotionally supportive environment to enrich the lives of our students. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being the leaders that you are and the commitment to the growth of our district. We know and understand the importance of your roles in our schools, and we appreciate all that you do for our families, our students, and your staff. It's not an easy job, and we thank you for all the things that you do for our district.
Of all the roles across school districts, principals are one of the most trusted across the community. Your work is immeasurable, and we could not do this without you. Thank you for everything you do to make our schools run successfully. Happy National Principals Month.
Fantastic. We love it. We just wanted to recognize our principals, because we all identify and understand that how critical their role is. You know, they support parents, community, staff, teachers, and administration. You know, they're the backbone. And we would not want this month to go by without taking the time to say thank you. Alright, great job on the video. Our next item for tonight is agenda participation. So, at this time, Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone signed up for agenda participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. Moving on, our next item is public participation. Do we have anyone signed up for public participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. For our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Academics and School Leadership, Dr. Kweh Kayong.
Thank you so much, President Durant, Trustees, and Superintendent Hinojosa. Really, really excited that we have an opportunity to hear from three administrators from Spring High School who are here to present the Spring Way here with us today. I'd like to introduce Principal Hemp Hill, Associate Principal Duncan, and Assistant Principal Mays, who will be presenting to the board this evening.
We're bringing you shirts.
Okay.
Look at how diverse our team is. They can change the set in just a matter of seconds.
Alright, Madam President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Hinojosa, it is a great day to be a mighty lion. I wanted to say that first and foremost. Today, we will be talking about the Spring Lion Way and how we are exuding our world-class culture. I want to focus around three areas tonight as we go through our agenda. This are areas of reinforcement and refinement, our systems and structures, and also our next steps. Joining here with me are my wonderful administrative team. Here, I have my associate, Mr. Terrence Duncan, and also my wonderful Assistant Principal as well, Ms. Rhonda Mays. And so, without further ado, we'll get into our presentation.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity to just present all of the wonderful things that are going on at Spring High School. My name is Rhonda Mays, and this is my 22nd day as an Assistant Principal on the campus, and I am super excited to be a mighty lion at Spring High School. And today, I just want to talk about all of the wonderful things that we're going to be refining and focusing on while we are getting ready for our students for the second half. So, one of the things that we are going to be focusing on is our student IDs. Students love IDs, but we're trying to teach them that the importance of the ID is so that we can know who's in our building and we can make sure that everyone is accounted for. The second thing is our dress code. We want students to know that as we model professionalism, they too will have to do that when they get into the public sector, and we want to show them that how you look also affects how you feel on the job. Thirdly, we are making sure that our students are accountable in attendance. We want them to know that in order to get the information their teachers are trying to provide, they have to show up. They have to be there. And it's important because they matter in the fabric of that classroom. And then, lastly, punctuality. We know that punctuality can make or break you in the real world, and we are striving, I'm sorry, we're striving to make sure that students understand that to be early is to be on time. When you're on time, most of the time, you're late, and when you're late, you're just not accounted for at all. So, we want them to know that you matter, you need to be there, and you're representing your families. And we are super excited about all the refinement and reinforcement that we're having at Spring. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Mr. Terrence Duncan. We are super excited to have his leadership.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Thank you all. So, I'm just going to go over the system and structures that we've had in place since we started and even some of them going back into last year. So, first off, all the students' ID badges, which we mentioned, all students must have the ID badges in and upon entry during transition. All are checked by staff throughout the course of the day. That is an emphasis point for us. We initially started out this year with color-coded wristbands for HES students if they didn't have their IDs, but now we have our Raptor. They can have the ability to print out temporary IDs so they can be accounted for. Dress code, we have a dress code checker at each entry point, and I'm going to talk a little bit about those entry points in just a minute. But students are provided an opportunity to self-correct and basically adjust those shirts or pull those pants up. They have those opportunities to do that, and we want them to do that. However, unfortunately, some of our students do not choose to do that, so we have to enforce, and so, which can result in either in-school suspension or a call home for defiance of authority. So, those monitoring of entryways and hallways. So, one of the things we wanted to focus on, particularly coming into this year, is limit the amount of entry points, particularly for morning. I don't know if you guys being, but most of you guys have all been to Spring High School. We have tons of ways of getting in and out of that building, and so, we made three main entryways total for morning duty especially. And within, at those entryways, we provided administrative presence and also police presence, which I'll speak to as well. And so, as far as our duties, all of our associates, our Associate Principals, which are three of us, Dr. Beans is back with us as well. And we take a look at those monitoring, who's monitoring, who's on duty. We take a look at their roster, try to put the most effective people in the right places. In addition to that, we include everybody, parent professionals, our teaching staff, leadership. Pretty much everybody in the building has duty, whether it's morning duty, lunch duty, or even afternoon duty. We have to, it has to be a team effort, so we include everybody as best as we can, as much as we can. So, as far as our strategic staffing and development, we are now fully staffed. We have a fully-staffed administrative team with our principal leading us, of course, three associates, and six APs in the building. We also have a fully-staffed hall monitoring staff, 10 hall monitors for Spring High School. To be honest with you, we could use some more. There's a lot of ways to get in and out of that building, but we do have a fully-staffed and very well-trained hall monitoring staff. In addition to that, we have weekly professional learning opportunities for safety, student, and also staff culture. And finally, the police collaboration and support has been important to us. We have increased police officer presence during, before, and after-school events, including a lot of those athletic events that we have on campus, of course. Police presence and K-9 officers at those entry points. Well, again, those three entry points, which we have to condense, which is critical for us, they've been very, very supportive at those. And additionally, and finally, probably most importantly, as far as our police officers, is the opportunity to build relationships with our students. They have a great opportunity to circumvent a lot of the issues before they even happen, and I just want to name our campus officers, Officer Chris Land, Officer Shakara Titus. They've done a fantastic job of building relationships on our campus, and so they're able to lead from that direction.
Definitely. Thank you. And just picking up from there as well, one of our key levers that we've all identified, of course, is building those relationships. It is part of our leadership definition here in Spring. And so, as we chart our way forward, our next steps include, first and foremost, we have an eightfold path, if you will. The revising the staff monitoring duty during this, especially as we are looking forward to making sure that we have a world-class environment throughout the entire campus. We are revising exactly our strategy around monitoring, around ensuring that our students are where they need to be to receive the excellent education. Moreover, conducting our faculty meeting, we have our faculty meetings all the time. As an update, we have had a faculty meeting centered around our key lever, and that is building relationships with each and every one of our students, with one another, and reaching out to our community as well. So, training all of our hall monitors, as you heard, we do train our hall monitors quite frequently. Actually, we have our meetings, but being purposeful around the strategy to train our hall monitors, to continue to build those relationships, and handle when, you know, we do need to de-escalate different situations. So, we do have those strategies at play. They will be trained on that as well. So, additional support from Central Office. We've always been a phone call away. We have always been had Central Office throughout our building, especially as we move forward, making sure that that relationship is even tighter, we're even closer. We've been having our Central Office personnel in the building as well, and so they're building relationships with students as well. So, you're not only able to see, you know, someone that supports PVA, they're going to be at every single show. They're going to be, whether they work in maintenance or a different department, they're at those events. And so, having another opportunity to, again, build relationships. We're strengthening our school, parents, and community communication, not only just the one-way with newsletters or, you know, callouts each time, but making it a two-way dialogue is something that we're focusing on moving forward. Also, our PBIS implementation, we do often focus on what is going to happen when there is noncompliance. Moving forward, especially when we're talking about building those relationships, what are our carrots? What are we going to make sure we're able to establish to ensure that each of our students has a positive experience here at Spring High School? We did do our reset on Spring Way Systems, so you are pretty familiar with those. I know there've been many presentations on the Spring Way Systems, but ensuring, again, that each teacher is at threshold, that we have our strong start, our due nows, to make sure that we have all of the parameters, all of the foundations of strong instruction at our school. And then, also, our effective classroom management. We have gone through different trainings, but again, our focus is now on how we're building relationships. We can write things down. We can have different procedures on a piece of paper, but if we do not have our personal relationships with our students, with one another, to have real conversations around what we're able to do and where we're able to go as a world-class institution, it's all for naught. So, making sure, again, that we're central, that we are focusing on centering our relationships around a positive environment and what it means to be world-class. And so, the Spring Lion Way, we have committed, moving forward, again, to focusing on relationships. We will be committed to, excuse me, visible and connected to each of our students and to each other as well. Moving forward, building strong relationships among staff, students, and families is paramount to where we want to go. Growing with our students throughout their high school careers and beyond is not just, okay, I had you in my class and we got credit. I want to know where you're going. I want to know what you want to do. And then, also, providing the supports based on their social, emotional, and academic needs. But again, this all happens through a high-quality relationship with our students and with each other. And with that, I do want to recognize as well, we have a couple of our teachers here, star teachers, Mr. Larios, and of course, Ms. Taylor as well in the house. And then, we also have our longtime volunteer, Ms. Debbie, always here to support, not only with our school initiatives, but is there every morning in the work. So, yes, I would definitely yield my time.
Thank you very much for your presentation and welcome. Ms. Mays has 22 days. You're jumping right in. So, going to the piece about relationships, you mentioned that's a key lever, and there's been a lot of training around it. What type of training has been provided on building relationships, and then how is that modeled amongst staff?
Definitely, definitely. And so, as we move forward, I know, as I said, we always have the staff meetings. We're focusing, again, we have those key strategies that we've been going through, but especially yesterday, when we met, everything that we did required collaboration. So, not only modeling it with one another, everything that we did, we set kind of a problem statement, if you will, to our staff. They worked through it collaboratively together, and then also talked about and shared stories frankly with each other on how, you know, they were able to monitor some of the relationship-centered pieces that's within our leadership definition.
How, how do you know it's working? How will we know that it's working?
Definitely. So, we'll know that it's working, again, through making sure that we have our strategies in place. So, we've identified yesterday in our staff meeting just some strategies that we want to see from each other, some things that we want to see from students, ways that we want to communicate, again, with our community, especially moving forward. And so, if we're able to see, one, you know, is there two-way communication with parents? That's one, one thing that they were able to latch on to. So, how do we prove that? How do we see that? And then, tracking that data so that we can make sure that improves. That's just one example.
So, staff pretty much collaborated to come up with what the expectations they have in their classrooms, and that's what you're utilizing as?
Yes, it's sort of expanding from our overall strategy of building relationships. Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to come back to that. Just another question for, because you mentioned PBIS and not addressing noncompliance. So, on the flip side, how have we or how can we implement positive reinforcement? Like, what types of positive reinforcement structures are in place? Because we, we got the consequences now, but what about the flip side?
Definitely. So, there are a lot of opportunities actually to do this within our high school. We've had the store. We've had different events, pep rallies. We just had homecoming not too long ago as well, where, you know, we, if you had no disciplinary issues, things like that, you were able to, you know, earn your way to certain perks, certain rewards within, you know, going to the event or receiving different items during homecoming week.
So, yes. So, you mentioned the store. How does that work?
Yes, and so, we're actually still developing that with, I know our ninth grade center, they're a little bit ahead of us in implementation, but we are implementing that.
So, how does theirs work?
Yes, and so, they just bought a system, basically, where they'll be able to, you know, one, if the student has good attendance, if the student has earned certain behavior points, then they'll be able to go to a school store, if you will, and redeem those points.
I wonder how, I know we did that in elementary, how effective have they, what successes have they seen, or has it been effective in ninth grade? What type of stuff they have in the store, the ninth grade store?
Okay, I would go.
I'm just curious, because we.
Yes, I would speak to, let's see.
And maybe you may not have, you know, there is right now. But I would just be curious, what are high schoolers want to buy from the store?
So, definitely shirts, different types of swag, things like that.
Okay. Just, just, I would like to see some more in terms of the building relationships piece and the strategies. Like, what, what is the guiding force? Like, what is it that we are utilizing that we all can come back to and point to, to say, this is what our? Like what is it that we are utilizing that we all can come back to and point to, to say, this is what our, I know we have the Springline Way, but in terms of building relationships, like what does that actually mean? What does that look like? How do we know that it's working? How can we incorporate student input? So just a little bit more.
Definitely, so.
You may not have that right now, but that's just something that I would, I would like to see.
Right, definitely, definitely different opportunities for communication, again, back and forth, not only formal but informal. And so even with Ms. Taylor, her, her taking charge of sort of our student council, things like that, being more involved and, and having a voice of things that go on on campus. And so that's, that's one way where we're able to do that. But then also, we, we do have a newly implemented tracking tool as well. So any and every individual on campus has the ability to go in, mark a student for, you know, some of our key expectations, but then did we follow up with that student? How did we, how did we address whether it was an issue or how did we celebrate that student as well?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Hemphill.
Good evening.
So I have a couple of things, and so as I sort of gather my thoughts, I was glad to hear you mention the reset of Springway systems and routines. I think all of our campuses need to do that periodically. I used to always say repetition is good pedagogy. And one of the things that Dr. Inos and I were discussing last night is a reset on our leadership definition, which I was also glad to hear you talking about. I have not seen really effective implementation of the leadership definition, and there's lots of blame to go around in terms of why that is happening. So again, I'm glad to hear you talking about that. What, you say you're, you're fully staffed in terms of administrators and hall monitors. Do you think being fully staffed is sufficient?
One, being fully staffed is sufficient in that we're able to, again, mark where folks go on a plan, things like that. I think, again, one of our most important things is how are we utilizing as far as strategy, our human capital, of course, but then also how are we building relationships? And so again, too, we can have someone that is at a place, but if they're not, let's say, your, your job is to make sure no one comes through this door, right? If we don't have the de-escalation strategies, if we don't have the relationship with students to make sure that that doesn't happen, again, it would just be a point on a paper and part of a plan. And so it is sufficient in that, hey, we, we've got that covered, we're, we're able to, to say that it's there on the, the paper, but it's not sufficient in that, are, are we effective? Are we being effective?
Okay, and so I, I gathered, like with time, that'll get better. I've been on your campus a couple of times, as I mentioned earlier, I have a Vine mentor there. And so I want to shout out and commend to you some folks on your staff. Ms. Smith, the 10th grade principal, Ms. Rasio, the clerk in the 10th grade office, and Ms. Lopez at your front desk. And an issue I have had with schools in Spring since my senior that you just saw was at Meyer Elementary is how people experience our campuses when they walk in the building. And then Ms. Lopez does a really good job. I watched her while I was standing there waiting for my mentor, interact with students who didn't have badges, making sure they got what they needed and got where they needed to be. So I just wanted to encourage you and your staff to continue the hard work, because I know it's not easy. Continue the hard work and commit, continue to demand excellence from everybody on that campus, especially the students.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening. I know you mentioned you all came up with your problem statement. I'd kind of like to hear a little bit more about that. But what I am interested in is where we started, where we are now, and what do you think is going to make that change? What is, what are the top two things that you think need to happen? And then how can we as a board support you in that?
Definitely. So to start with the question, the top two things, one thing that we focused on yesterday was really around the, the priority here about targets and punctuality, ensuring that students are in class. And so yesterday, that's what, again, we, we all got a chance to, one, speak around our leadership definition on creating relationships and having those real, the, the real talks. But then where we are, where we were is we had our system, we might have had, again, places where we could definitely refine. And so making sure that there was, there was the follow-through with what our system is. And so that takes a commitment from each and every person. And so the way that we are strategizing around having that commitment is, again, not just us as an administrative team, but with everybody. And so that's one of our first and foremost things that's important for us, because it goes back to attendance, it goes back to how our students are, are going to access a high-quality education. And then our biggest, our second biggest piece would be, I would say around our expectations of what we want for our students, around really talking about, you know, are we doing what's best for our students each and every day? And that, again, comes from a commitment from adults and us having our conversations, us having our, again, relational talks to be able to do what's best for students. So if it's not going well, being able to say that for, to each other and charting our way forward together.
So you would say follow-through and then your expectations and commitment to each other?
Yes.
So how do we, how do we make sure that the kids are aware?
Right.
You know, of what that follow-through and that expectation is. You know, oftentimes, they get used to, to one thing, we need to make sure that they understand that this is what it is today. And so are we communicating that out and making sure that they are informed before consequences are handed out, that we make them aware?
Daily communication, it is daily communication, not only with the, the community, not only with the students directly. They get emails, phone calls from me all the time, got a lot of messages of, you know, of just kind of back and forth and, and me even fine-tuning how long my voice messages are. So I've gotten a lot of feedback on that. And also making sure that we are all on one accord as well. And so not only me reinforcing the expectation or my wonderful administrative team, but every single person on campus, everyone.
I just, as we tighten up this ship, the kids will say, well, last week, that was okay. Why is that not okay today, right? And so how do we address that? Because, you know, making that change, it takes communication, as you said. But how do we make sure that they're aware that this is what, what's coming and how we're going to proceed? So daily communication works. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Cora.
Oh, yeah, I was just waiting.
Sometimes the lights glow and I can't tell who lights.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you for coming. Not to beat around the bush, I'm sure this was not the easiest thing to, to do, was to come and talk to us about this, knowing that we've got some known issues. So I definitely appreciate that, especially day 22, so thank you. But I did kind of want to follow up on Trustee McDaniel. I think what I'm kind of hearing from some of my colleagues is we're hearing kind of the philosophical plan in place and, and kind of broad scope of what we're going to do. But I think what, what I'm looking for is more of some of the tangible, like more specifics on, on what it is, like what we can see as far as changes. One of my main questions was that what checks and balances do you have in place to make sure that everyone, after they've been trained, after you've had the conversations, after you've had the communication? Like what are those specific checks and balances that you'll have in place to make sure that everything is being done and implemented with fidelity?
And so one of the key things, as we said, the tracker, there's a QR code, they pretty much track all of our expectations from Springway, student IDs, dress code, student attendance being punctual. Everyone has access to it. And so weekly, really looking at that data as to the frequency of students that did not come with an ID, students that were out of dress code, reevaluating how many people are in the hallway each and every day. And so weekly training, not only for staff, just around how to use that tool, and everybody saying the same message, everybody using that tracker, but then also training on, again, how we're going to respond to that data once we, we get it as well. And so being just very purposeful about those instances, the, the times that we see it happen, making sure that it's input so that we can then track it and, and notice less and less over time. And that's the improvement that we hope to see. One, using the tool, of course, but then two, again, it's all just a plan if we don't have the relationships there and relationships established.
So for, I guess, just to drill down a little bit, you're, you mentioned number two in your next step. You said, conduct a faculty meeting with a, a guest speaker. Is that something, I think I just heard you say weekly. Is that something that you're going to have weekly?
And so our weeklys are really around kind of professional learning opportunities. And so whether that be some of our community building, talking about our academics, that'll be offered during their PLC time and then also after school. But then kind of our, our monthly, if you will, our, our big monthly meeting, then yes, the, the guest speaker to, you know, one, reinforce the charge as to what we're charged with. And then two, you know, give them someone else to, to speak beyond us, so.
And my last question is, you mentioned additional support from, from central office. What, in, in your eyes, what does that look like?
Definitely. So our additional support has come in the form of, one, just, just extra presence. And then two, being able to, like, it's so quick whenever there's an issue that arises, things like that. It, it's able to be solved kind of on the spot. And so our support has come in, in that form, but then also the support from our entire central office, that we're not just a, a school that's out here in the district, we are all SpringISD.
Thank you.
Chuck, I guess as I process the next steps, did I see here, the, the thing that I don't see that Trustee McDaniel sort of alluded to is student voice. And as, as you are setting the culture at Spring High School, a, a powerful ally can be the student leaders on your campus. And you can start cultivating them as soon as they hit the door as freshmen, so that by the time they're seniors, they have set the culture and they deal with your issues with dress code and badges and all of that. Without, you know, and they can, they can be in these de-escalation trainings too. So I think I would add sort of next step number nine to really utilize the talent you have walking around as students on your campus.
Definitely, yeah. Thank you.
I just had a technical question. Now, when you mentioned the QR codes, I assume those are on the badges?
So QR codes, they're, they're really for our staff, and so it's, it's kind of our internal thing. But yes, they, they will be around our building as well. And so they're able to just access it. It goes to a Google form, again, that tracks each of our expectation.
I'm, I'm just imagining a situation where a student's out in the hall and you say, you need to get back to class and they are not acting well. And you don't know their name, and they don't have a badge. How do you handle a situation like that?
Definitely. And so again, that's part of our strategy, just the, the constant monitoring piece. If we're not able to address them in that moment or redirect, we do have, you know, our surveillance systems, things like that, that we're able to use to identify between the, the administrative staff, our support staff. Somebody's going to know the student, and a lot of us know them, first name, last name, mom and dad, so, or guardian. So that's, again, just kind of the technical piece with identifying them, we, we go through our steps. I don't know who this is, let me go in the chat, can we check it this time? Who is this student? And someone will know.
I, I'd just like to thank you for being here. And I'd also like to say, as we explore our opportunities that we have, I think we're blessed as a district, and I'm proud to serve with my colleagues, who I know their heart is in doing what's best for kids. I believe that's in our leadership team and our superintendent. I see it in our administrative staff, our teachers, all the way down to our community members that are here. And that we all collaborate together in making sure that every day is a good day, and that we're touching every student, every teacher, every day. And I know sometimes conversations and things are difficult, but I think as long as we continue to collaborate and work as a team, we can all win. And that's how we win as that team. And so as a board, you know, I'd like to know what we can do, you know, or if there's something we can do, you know, to help support you at Spring High, because that's important to all of us as well.
Definitely. I think as a board, one of our key, that's the board, one of the, one of the key things, again, is, is come see us, definitely. And so we, we see y'all a lot. I know I saw definitely Mr. Adams this morning even, so just, just come see us. And, and being able to, again, have those dialogues, have those conversations where we're able to, you know, really problem solve, really talk about, okay, where are we with the, the student-centered piece? So just having that dialogue and continue to bring it up in this forum.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, and welcome. Awesome, Ms. Cora, do you? Yes, you can continue.
Thank you, President Durant, trustees, and Superintendent Hinahosa. It, last, last work session, we were able to hear from three dynamic leaders that were giving us examples of their campus improvement plans, ranging from elementary to middle to high schools. Each board member received all the campus improvement plans on the flash drive. And this week, we bring this item back to you, asking the board to approve the campus improvement plans as presented.
So this is a, are we having a public hearing? Yeah, right. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, Madam President.
All right, thank you very much. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the Spring Independent School District's 2023-2024 Campus Improvement Plans.
Sir, second?
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee McDaniel that the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District approve the 23-24 Campus Improvement Plans. It's been moved that the Board of Trustees approve the Spring Independent School District's 23-24 Campus Improvement Plan. At this time, is there any discussion?
So I mentioned the work session, that sort of the state-provided format of the Campus Improvement Plan template sort of falls into this trap that we all learned about at Tassie-Tasby last month. And so to the. uh, last month. And so, to the extent that, uh, going forward, we can reorient our paradigm in terms of, you know, what we look at um, on the campus improvement plans, I'd, I'd like to explore that maybe further with Dr. Hinahosa and Dr. Quayar. And you do recall what I'm talking about, where like the, the, the improvement is focused more on the adults in the, the building than the kids in the building. Um, it was, I, I think that's a good paradigm. Um, but, you know, me thinking it isn't sufficient to say we ought to change it. So, I just would like to explore that further.
Any thoughts or comments on that?
I, I think, you know, Mr. Adams and I had a conversation, and while the state provides really specific, uh, formula, right? Um, what I hear you saying is when we do the needs assessment, we normally automatically do the needs assessment on what are the kids, what is their, um, areas of improvement that are needed. And so, we drill down so deeply on the students. And so, as we're working through the needs assessment, also be able to, um, look and see what portion of this do we own as the adults, the educators in that building? Um, because ultimately, the students will do what we ask them to do, right? And so, as we're doing our needs assessment, um, and drilling down, looking at what educators can do, um, what we can do better, and maybe where are the areas of need. So, when we ask those five questions to make sure that we're also being reflective with the educators on campus. So, yes, we can certainly do that during that needs assessment. It gives us a, a section for us to be able to look at that.
Now, I would like to second that as well. I guess to take a more hol- holistic approach. Um, yes, we have to meet the state requirements, but also drilling down and making sure that we are looking at the schools holistically and individually and whatever the needs are for those campuses.
Okay, any more discussion? Doc, now I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Uh, for our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Ann Westbrook.
Good evening, President Durant, Dr. Hinahosa and members of the board. Tonight, we'll discuss the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, which is referred to as the School First Report. The law requires that school districts prepare an annual financial accountability report within two months of receiving the final ratings. And each school district must announce and hold a public hearing to distribute the results of that report. And this is our public hearing here this evening. The report begins on page twenty-four in your packets. So, as a reminder, the School First is a financial accountability rating system that holds school districts accountable for the quality of our financial management. And it's designed to encourage effective and efficient management of financial resources in order to provide the maximum allocation possible for direct instructional purposes. The rating system that you have here this evening and the report is based upon the 2021-2022 fiscal year. And it consists of twenty indicators that look at the trends related to financial management efficiencies. The first four indicators are answered with either a simple yes or no, while the others either have a point value and/or a ceiling indicator. Failure to comply with any of the first four indicators will result in an automatic failure. And then, just as a note, there are still some indicators that are not being scored. That's indicator number five, ten, fourteen and fifteen. And those indicators are typically, at this time, not being scored because there's many things that are happening with school finance that are outside of school districts' controls, such as how we're estimating our average daily attendance compared to the actual, those sorts of things. So, those have been put on hold so as not to, um, hold the dis- or to harm the districts, um, with something that we can't simply control at this time. So, um, with that said, with the report that you have in front of you and all of the additional information that's provided, it is my honor this evening to say that Spring ISD does have an A rating, which represents a superior achievement on this report. And we're very proud of that rating and continue to work very hard to maintain that rating in future years. The report also includes six required disclosures, and these disclosures are in the appendix of the School First Report. The six disclosures include a copy of the current superintendent's employment contract, reimbursements received by the superintendent and board members for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And as a note, uh, these are reimbursements that are related primarily to business travel on behalf of the district in the board and the superintendent's official capacity. And also, as a note, twenty-one, twenty-two is a year when we had some transition. And so, you'll note that our previous superintendent, as well as our current superintendent, is listed throughout the report. There is also a report of outside compensation fees that are received by the superintendent for professional or consulting or other personal services, of which there were none. There's a, a report of any gifts that were received from outside vendors by the board, the superintendent or their immediate family members. And again, I want to note that there were none. And there's a listing of any business transactions between the board members and the district, and there are none to report. And then lastly, we have an opportunity to include any other additional information that we deem to be useful, and we did not have any additional information that's available. The report will be on the district's Spring ISD Financial Transparency Page later this week for our community to see as well.
Trustee Quayar? Chief Westbrook, this is a thirty-page report that took many, many hours of data collection and writing up, and it ensures that we are spending our public, our taxpayer money uh, with integrity and with, uh, absolute, uh, complete visibility to anybody who wants to see how we are spending our money in our school district. Um, do you want to express about how important this is to you as our Chief Financial Officer?
Oh, absolutely. As Chief Financial Officer of the district, my primary responsibility to not only you, the board, to our superintendent, but most importantly, to our community members, our taxpayers, is to ensure that we are being great financial stewards of the dollars that are entrusted to us. Because that's what it is. It's trust. And there's trust in the work that we do here in the district, the decisions that we make to ensure that our students are being afforded the absolute best education possible with the funds that we have available. So, this A rating is something that we do not take lightly. And as I mentioned, it's something that you, the board, and our team and financial services in the district as a whole are working very hard to continue to maintain that strong, uh, financial base that Spring ISD has had for many years.
I am, uh, absolutely hundred percent supporter of what you have just said and believe absolutely firmly that any public funds that are spent on education should be visible to all of us taxpayers in Texas.
Amen.
That nobody should get our taxpayer money for education and then just spend it wherever they want and not give us a report on the outcomes of their education and how they spent that money. I believe in accountability.
I will second her sentiments. Um, and thank you for upholding all that you do. And it's, your job is a difficult job. Um, so just a couple of comments. This, uh, School First, uh, Rating System of Texas, I think we need a government-first rating system of Texas for the exact same reason.
Watch out now.
Uh, there were a few things that I just wanted to have you help me understand, just to make sure I was reading them correctly. Um, I noticed on page ten, which is page thirty-six of our little packet here, it talks about the operating cost management. And our operating cost per student kind of falls right in the middle of our neighboring districts. But our average daily attendance number was on the lowest end. So, what is that? That average daily attendance number, what does that represent?
That's our membership, our students that are enrolled in Spring ISD and how often those students are coming to school. And so, if you recall, our average daily attendance in this particular year was very low.
Very low.
And so, that is what we had to adjust to when we were preparing our twenty-two, twenty-three, um, budget. And so, yes, that, that's what that represents, and it is low, and we hope to see that number continue to go up over the next couple of years.
Okay. And I kind of thought that's what it was, so thank you for clarifying. Um, which kind of leads me to my next question about our looking at the operating cost per student and then moving up to the administrative cost comparison. So, the state limits eight point five-five, and we've historically been about two and a half percent above that. Do we have an idea of why our administrative costs seem to be so much higher inconsistently for the last two, five, six years, minus twenty and twenty-one?
Where are you at?
Uh, top of page ten.
Page ten?
Page thirty-six, thirty-six. Oh, the, the, the binder.
So, this cost particularly looks at, um, two, two areas, and that is what we call Function Twenty-One, which is our instructional administration, and Function Forty-One, which is our general administration. So, it takes those two numbers and looks at it as a percentage of our, um, total. So, spring, we're still pretty well within the norm for the administrative cost. I can say that this is something that has been, uh, concerned that you all have shared with us. And so, we have been working with two outside agencies to do a review of our administrative costs and our administrative staffing. And so, we'll be happy to bring those, the results of those two studies to the board through this budget process that will start in January of twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is on the tax collection. I noticed that our tax collection rate has slowly trickled down from seventeen to twenty-two.
Yes, and that's, that's pretty common as values go up, that we tend to see our collections get a little bit more sluggish. And so, yes, that's something that we pay close attention to. And we also, a lot of times, we collect the money, but we're paying large refunds. And you all see those reports every month. And so, um, that, that is factored into it as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure. And just as a quick note, with our tax collections, remember that bottle of water all the time, right? So, as we get more tax revenue, we get less state aid, and the opposite is true as well. So, even though we're, we're paying those refunds eventually, and I do mean eventually, because sometimes it takes a couple of years, we'll get the state aid to offset those refunds that we're paying.
Hi, Ms. Westbrook. On page four, um, item nine, did the schools, did, did the school districts' general fund revenues equal or exceed expenditures? So, that was, we got a ten for that in twenty-one, twenty-two. We will not get that ten for twenty-two, twenty-three. Is that correct?
So, it looks at two different things. So, our revenues will not exceed our, um, operating expenditures in twenty-two, twenty-three. You're correct there. But we should still meet or exceed the cash on hand,
Okay.
which is the sixty days cash on hand.
Okay.
So, we won't meet part A, but we'll meet, we should.
Then we'll still get our ten points then.
Should, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, Madam President, we do not.
So, since we have no identified speakers, I want to thank you, Ms. Westbrook, and we'll continue on with tonight's agenda, which is our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Westbrook.
Okay, thank you. So, our next item is, uh, item that we discussed at the Thursday, October fifth work session. And it was a recommendation that the administration brought forward to the board, requesting that we would uncommit the five million dollars that we previously committed in June of twenty-nineteen for strategic compensation. And so, this recommendation was coming forward to the board due to a lack of funding caused by the district's budget deficit that we've had many discussions about. And we know that we came into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year with just over a twenty-five million dollar budget deficit. Also, at the same time, our ESER funding is coming to an end in twenty-three, twenty-four. So, the funds in the local district budget are simply not available for, uh, the continuation of the program a- as we see it. But of course, as we've discussed, the teacher incentive allotment that is funded through the Texas Education Agency for strategic compensation for our teachers is available. And as requested, there was some additional information that was provided to you all about the teacher incentive allotment. And we discussed that we had a total payout this, this past summer of four point four million dollars. And that the payouts to our individual teachers ranged from thirty-eight hundred dollars to twenty-nine thousand dollars. And so, some of the questions that you all asked us was to give some scenarios. So, we have two scenarios there with Teacher A and Teacher B, who are real teachers in Spring ISD. Um, one had a master designation, one had a recognized designation. One of our teachers, um, who had ninety-three percent of their students' method growth measures, received seventy-five hundred dollars under Spring's Strategic Compensation Plan, Spring Rising, and an additional twenty-nine thousand dollars under the teacher incentive allotment. So, for a total of thirty-six thousand, five hundred and ten dollars for that individual teacher. And then, Teacher B, who had a recognized designation, had twelve years' experience, um, had fifty-four percent of their students' met growth, and they received only the TIA payment for, uh, three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. So, that's just two examples of teachers who receive part, uh, incentive funds either both through Spring ISD and through TIA or just through TIA. And there was also a specific question about, were there teachers who received the Spring Rising incentive but did not qualify for TIA? And there were, of the three hundred and forty-eight employees who received Spring Rising, a hundred and thirty-eight of them received Spring Rising but not the TIA. So, um, as you can see on page fifty-seven at the bottom, the TIA program or our allotment program that's designed by Spring ISD was expanded to include more teachers, um, more teaching positions and more grade levels. You can see that information at the bottom of page fifty-seven. And then, all of the criteria that's related to the Spring Rising program as written is here as well.
Looks like y'all need a minute.
What was the total dollar amount for the, the one hundred and thirty-eight employees that qualified for the Spring Rising but not the TIA?
Um, I didn't, I did not take. I didn't, I did not take that specific number down. The total payout was just over one point seven or closer to one point eight million, but I didn't total the hundred and thirty-eight.
It was some fraction of that.
And the two um examples that you gave, looks like those were the the men and max.
So Spring Rising is touching not just teachers.
Exactly.
Is TIA as expansive in terms of who gets caught up in it? Because we're talking about interventionists, instructional, paraprofessionals, APs. Do they qualify for the TIA?
The teacher incentive allotment is very specific, and it's only to those individuals that are coded as teachers through the P E M system. So classroom teachers and interventionists are coded as teachers, so they would qualify. None of the other positions would qualify as TIA is currently written. Not through Spring's program, but the TEA program.
Who else did we call this besides Spring Rising?
Let me make sure I clarify what I just said. So TEAs, the teacher incentive allotment program, doesn't allow us to write in for anyone other than a teacher to qualify for those funds.
So this, again, gets to like whether there's a possibility of not eliminating you know, for purposes of making sure we are covering our paraprofessionals and other people that make a positive contribution to student success. And and like then that makes Trustee Correa's question about the one hundred and thirty-eight folks, like, is there some smaller amount that would make sure that we are benefiting those folks that are not touched by T I T I A? And so maybe what we do is we eliminate what we're doing for people that can earn a TIA bonus and make sure we leave something for our other people.
And then I I still want to clarify just for myself. We said this paid out one time, but this was originally, there was attendance piece paid to this that was paid out uh previously.
Yes, ma'am. And so the originally designed program started with attendance, but we began this program in the midst of the pandemic. And so we took the attendance piece out because there was a highly likelihood that an extremely effective teacher could have been out due to COVID, and they wouldn't have been able to qualify for the local incentive program. So it was there, you're absolutely correct, but it was it was removed for that.
But we did pay out on the attendance historically.
We did not, because attendance was the starting point. And so you had to have, I believe it was four or less absences. And that was how you were able to qualify at all for Spring Rising. But to the benefit of our teachers, we removed that requirement because of COVID.
Well, what program was it where we paid out attendance incentives?
Prior to Spring Rising, we had an attendance incentive where we would go on Facebook Live and we would cheer on and we were giving out funds for teachers that had a certain amount of absences. Did it have a name? I don't remember if. I think we just called it the attendance incentive.
And they were placed, if you had less, um what was it, four or less absences that were paid placed in a lottery? And so we would do the lottery and select um teachers that would get a payout. That was when we were working on.
Phase one of Spring Rising. When that, when we originally did it, it had su- specific components. Uh the attendance was one piece of it. That was actually the first phase we implemented. And it was for more than just teachers. The whole intent was to make sure that, you know, we had, we were incentivizing all staff. So I just, I don't know how it got broke up into these pieces. I my concern is I just want to make sure that we don't lose the original intent that this was not just specifically for teachers.
And I think I just wanted to piggyback because that was one of my um areas of concern too, because we focus a lot on teachers, but a lot more goes into it, and a lot of times, we want to reward teachers who are successful. A lot of times, teachers who are successful become coaches. They become interventionists. They're still touching classrooms. They're still touching, they're, in fact, touching much more students. And so I don't know how it could look, but I think we should definitely consider some sort of way, like Trustee Adams mentioned, maybe there's a smaller allotment or something to where we can still incentivize all of those other positions because they deserve it as well.
Yeah, I understand where we are from a a budget perspective. And that we need to do all that we can. Um and we do have the teacher allotment, and so we do have funding that is now available for teachers. So looking at this fund balance amount that we have um set aside, do we? I just want to know what the plan is before we just, you know, before we just yank it all out. And then how do we account for those that now, you know, won't be receiving anything outside of the teacher allotment? So I I think we're pulling funds and we we haven't thoroughly identified plans or next steps around the original intent of the program.
So by and large, the the largest amount that would be paid out would be to teachers. So it sounds as though the board agrees that the teacher incentive allotment is a mechanism for teachers. So would the happy medium need to significantly reduce the amount? Say five hundred thousand dollars, and then we write something that is specific to non-teachers for their contribution to our student achievement?
And I think that's where I'm coming down. I was gonna ask how time sensitive this is for us.
Very, because we issue our financial statements next month, and we needed to get the number nailed down before we issue our our financial statement.
If we could develop a program that touches the people that are sort of tangential to what TIA is offering, I would be, I would be much more comfortable with that.
We wouldn't necessarily need to make that decision quickly. We just need to determine. If everyone's comfortable with five hundred thousand, then we could walk away with that, and then we could come back at a later date with that design.
If we take it from five million, can we go a one million?
Well, so if if five hundred thousand is sufficient to meet our needs, that's why. Well, that's why the the calculation, like yeah, the calculation that we were talking about. Because it, I thought you, I saw somewhere that it was one point eight or whatever was. And so that's the payout with, including the teacher that got like a seven thousand dollar. So it's not, if we are eliminating teachers because they have their own pot of money from the state, we don't really need, or do we really need the full million dollars?
It's one of those things where.
Enough and but not and not use it all, then I have enough.
Well, and so if we say five hundred thousand, then the plan would be developed around that amount, trying to keep it small, because we do have a twenty-five million dollar deficit. And so the five hundred thousand dollars wouldn't necessarily that wouldn't necessarily be what we would spend in one year. We set aside the five hundred thousand, and whatever that first payout is, then it goes down, and it goes down, and then we come back and we make decisions based on that. So five hundred thousand, when we're talking about everyone other than teachers, is likely quite sufficient.
Yeah, I would I would agree with that, and based on the the total of the one million dollar payout. And this is an allotment, not a line item.
That's absolutely correct. This is, we're talking fund balance, because the strategic compensation plan was never a budget line item. It was, we would utilize fund balance in order to to do this. And it just so happened that all of that happened right before the pandemic, when those funds were set aside, was was right before the pandemic. And now we're in a different circumstance, whereas to Mr. Adams' point earlier, we're dipping into our fund balance in twenty-two, twenty-three to a to a heavy amount. So that's reducing the amount of fund balance that's available, and what we want to do is stabilize. So that we're not using our fund balance and hopefully adding back to it.
I think in my mind, the math works, just in um for five hundred thousand.
Trust the math teacher and our wonderful CFO. And I feel better about it.
So we adjust the motion language.
So it means we will just change the motion. Committed funds would be the five hundred thousand as opposed to the.
Yes, ma'am.
So um can we remote reword the motion to say that the board will reduce the amount of fund balance by four point five million? That is committed. Okay, Trustee Adams, thank you.
If you just replace that zero with five hundred thousand, I believe it is.
That's the best way to go.
Anybody else? Floor is open for a motion?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees reduce the amount of the fund balance that is committed to strategic compensation to five hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
We move by Trustee Adams and seconded by Trustee Correa that the Board of Trustees reduce the amount of the fund balance that is committed to the strategic compensation to five hundred thousand dollars.
Good evening, trustees. As you begin this discussion, I do want to just make everyone aware that part of our local designation system allows for us, after consulting with our teachers, to share the teacher allotment that each teacher receives. For example, in northeast northeast ISD where I came from, the teachers decided that they wanted to not receive a hundred percent of their allotment, that up to ten percent, or the ten percent of their allotment could be shared with other campus staff. That just has to be something when we modify our plan, that we 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 write into the plan, but we'd also have to survey our stakeholders. And so that is another option that is available to us as we proceed with the teacher incentive allotment.
So individual, individuals make that decision?
Well, you, we have to make it as a as a whole. And so i- if we, we would make, right, so all teachers would have to share. And so we'd have to get buy-in from all teachers. And in northeast, it was very, they wanted to share with their colleagues who were contributing to success. So it was voted by the committee, the steering committee, to to share ten percent of each teacher's allotment with campus, other staff on the campus. They don't share district-wide, they share it with campus staff on that campus.
What year was that voted in?
This is part of northeast ISD's plan, so you have this flexibility under the the plan. Uh northeast is still in the aspiring phase, and so they, I believe this year is the data collection year, so the first payout will be next school year.
I was just wondering, was it pre-COVID? Because, you know, Maybe in twenty eighteen, I was willing to share, but.
We were applying post-COVID. And so these conversations with teachers uh and the steering committee were happening post-COVID, and they still, they were eager to share.
That's a great option. As we develop the plan.
Do, so would we need to approve this compensation plan? Does that keep a board vote?
No, that would just be part of our application to T E A, but we would definitely keep you like the changes that that happened over the this spring. We we would bring to you what we're pursuing as far as changes and modifications to our application. And plus, then, like I said, it but it has to be, we have to get the voice of our teachers uh in this decision. Because they can say TK just said, I didn't want to share my ten percent, TK made me. But we want it to be, you know, really, really get the voice of our teachers in this decision.
So I li- I like that idea. Um I I I think I I would be in favor of both and. One of the concerns I have about TIA is it's dependent upon the state legislature for funding. And I don't have a lot of confidence in that legislature from session to session that this funding will be maintained. And so to the extent that it is possible to keep our own program, even if it is a program that is for uh folks ancillary to teachers, I would like to do that.
So what you were saying, just as an example, if one teacher received a twenty-nine thousand dollar payout, she could share, she or he could share twenty-nine hundred dollars of that with others, as an example.
Correct, others on the campus. And then in northeast plan, it identified which specific positions it would be shared with, but yes.
And that ten percent is what you guys came up with, or that's that's a?
It's, you're allowed up to ten percent by law, I believe.
Thank you, Dr. King. And of course, if we get that plan in place, we would spend those dollars.
Still leave these committed. If we find another way. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Right, then I'm gonna go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So our next item is the reading of the trustees' continuing education hours, which I know I have. Under the State Board of Education rule, completing required continuing education each year of service is a basic obligation and expectation of any sitting board member. As Board President, I am required to announce the names of each member who has completed the required continuing education, who has exceeded the required continuing education, or who is deficient in meeting the required continuing education. The requirements for training are measured as of the first anniversary of the date of the trustee's election or appointment, or two-year anniversary of his or her previous training as applicable. There are ten training areas for board members continuing education. Local district orientation, orientation to the Texas Education Code, open government, evaluating student academic performance and setting goals, post legislative update to the Texas Education Code, cybersecurity, child abuse prevention, team building, school safety, and additional continuing education. To the extent applicable to each board member, I will announce the completion or deficiency as to their required training. For members who still have time remaining to complete required training, I will announce those board members who have scheduled timely training and those who have not yet scheduled that training. At the conclude conclusion of this announcement, I will announce any board member's training in excess of the continuing education requirement. There are a couple I need to identify. Local district orientation, no, no board members were required to complete the local district orientation training for the time period covered during this announcement. Orientation to the Texas Education Code, no board members were required to complete the orientation to the Texas Education Code training for this time period covered by this announcement. Open government, no board members were required to complete open government training for the time period covered by this announcement. And evaluating and approving student outcomes, the following trustees have completed the biennial training on evaluating student achievement, performance, and goals. Dr. Deborah Jensen, Kelly P. Hodges, Justine Durant, Winfred Adams, Rhonda Newhouse, Carmen Correa, and Natasha McDaniel. Post legislative update to the Texas Education Code, the following trustees have completed The following trustees have completed the biennial training on post legislative update to the Texas Education Code. Dr. Deborah Jensen, Kelly P. Hodges, Justine Durant, Winford Adams, Rhonda Newhouse, Carmen Correa, and Natasha McDaniel. Cybersecurity. The following trustees have completed the annual cybersecurity training. Dr. Deborah Jensen, Kelly P. Hodges, Justine Durant, Winford Adams, Rhonda Newhouse, Carmen Correa, and Natasha McDaniel. Child abuse prevention. The following trustees have completed the biennial training on child abuse prevention. Dr. Deborah Jensen, Kelly P. Hodges, Justine Durant, Winford Adams, Rhonda Newhouse, Carmen Correa, and Natasha McDaniel. Team building. The following board members have completed the annual team building training. Dr. Deborah Jensen, Kelly P. Hodges, Justine Durant, Winford Adams, Rhonda Newhouse, Carmen Correa, and Natasha McDaniel. School safety. The following board members have completed the biannual training on school safety. Dr. Deborah Jensen, Kelly P. Hodges, Justine Durant, Winford Adams, Rhonda Newhouse, Carmen Correa, and Natasha McDaniel. Additional continuing education. The following trustees have completed the additional continuing education requirements. Dr. Deborah Jensen, Kelly P. Hodges, Justine Durant, Winford Adams, Rhonda Newhouse, Carmen Correa, and Natasha McDaniel. Exceeding required continuing education. Board member Deborah Jensen exceeded the required required amount of continuing education training by ninety point two-five additional hours. Board member Kelly P. Hodges exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by forty-two additional hours. Board member Justine Durant exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by fifty-two additional hours. Board member Winford Adams exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by eighty-four hours. Board member Rhonda Newhouse exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by ninety-two additional hours. Board member Carmen Correa exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by sixty-seven point two-five additional hours. Board member Natasha McDaniel exceeded the requirement required amount of continuing education training by sixty-seven point two-five additional hours. Board member Natasha McDaniel exceeded the required amount of continuing education training by ninety-five point two-five additional hours. I want to thank all of our board members for completing their continuing education as required. Thank you. So our next item for tonight's agenda will be an update from our committees. I'm going first, I'll go first with the Board Audit Committee. We did have to reschedule our meeting from last week because we were all out. So we have not met yet for this month, so we will bring an update next month. Next is our Board Governance Committee update, and this time I will turn it over to trustee Adams. I'm sorry.
I'll lead Jensen.
Dr. Deborah Jensen, please.
I don't want Winford to get that during the headlights look, though he was certainly there. Our review of our objectives, we review and edit local policies. We are involved in legislative advocacy, and we celebrate Spring ISD employees. We met Monday, October sixteenth. Everybody was there. Thank you, Natasha. Thank you, Winford. Thank you, Dr. Inahosa. Thank you, Mr. Binkley. And I was there as well. We had an update of the Delegate Assembly from Natasha, and she is our wonderful delegate at the Tasby Legislative Assembly. And I can tell you that having done that role, you're on the spot having to vote for things, and you're hopefully representing Spring's interests on the spot. And she has just done a marvelous job, so thank you, Natasha. The next thing we discussed are some of our advocacy issues. And we have some wonderful forms and ways to advocate for what you want on school funding and accountability, and also what they're calling school choice right now, which I will expand on in just a moment. But the first thing that we also described was that we are being evaluated as a, well, in the past, as a B school. We've done better now. And now because post the last school year, academic year, the Commissioner of Education has been trying to massage the data and go back, and then people are angry, so then he does it again. And so we really don't know how we're going to be evaluated. Can you imagine taking a test where always ninety to a hundred was an A? Or, you know, you knew the grading scale, and then someone comes up behind you and says, well, now you're going to have to have a ninety-eight to make an A. You know, so we're, we think it's unfair, and we're part of a lawsuit, so enough said there. As a PhD in education, I will tell you that I would like to have a competent evaluation with procedures and the measurement tools given to us ahead of time. And that is the way to run a fair measurement system for a school district, in my opinion. The next thing is accountability. We have both academic and we have financial accountability. And we have the financial accountability is something we just heard from our wonderful Chief of Finance. And we are very concerned about proposals before the legislature right now that have no financial accountability for some of these proposals. And we are the taxpayers who are paying for this. And so if you want to have some word about how your money is spent, now is the time to talk to your legislators. The other thing is measurement. I counted up over twenty tests that we give public school students. And there's additional tests if you're special ed or G T. And private schools have zero state accountability. Homeschoolers have zero state accountability. And our point is that if you're getting state money, we want to know if you're really teaching the TEES and if you really can pass these tests that all our public school students take, and that that is only fair. If you're going to accept state money, then you should accept the state accountability measures, both financially and on academics. All right, now, I will now switch to the Employee Excellence Awards. We have been simplifying, there are several of us who have looked at this and simplified, simplified the thing, and we think we are to the essentials and really will get a good view of the nominees when somebody thinks a employee has done an absolutely stupendous job that we need to give them an award. Remember, we will give everybody who has nominated the nomination form. But for the awards, Dr. Inahosa says that she will be in about a week or two sending out this sample form to everybody, every employee in the district. So please, 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 you have some wonderful coworkers, and you see some wonderful people, please nominate them. Now, I'm going to switch to Natasha for the last two items because she has some exciting things going on with student governance and also her new business that she's bringing forward.
Yes, I will be brief. The Student Governance Fellowship, we talked about, I believe, last month. I, this week, met with the Regional Advocacy Director from Raise Your Hand Texas, and so we're getting the ball rolling with that, going to collaborate, of course, with Dr. Inahosa about our next step. So we should have more rolling out soon with that, but we have gotten the ball rolling. And then I'm also a member of Leadership Tasby Class of 2024, and our research project, one of our topics was board operating procedures. Well, that was an option, and so I thought, well, that would be a perfect topic because that's something that our board has been wanting to revamp and just revisit to update and ensure that it's meeting the needs of our board so that we're able to make sure that we have our structures in place, especially when new board members come along so that we can have that board operating procedure in place. So that is more in the works. I should hear more from L. Tasby on in that work very shortly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Natasha, and we really appreciate all the members of our Governance Committee. Thank you.
Trustee McDaniel, do we have an update from the Delegate Assembly?
Well, it was not as lively as last year, I have to say. It was pretty brief. There were, and trustee Correa was there in the observation area as well, so chime in if you would like. But anything notable? We talked about representative curriculum. That was one area that was passed, and we moved forth with that, that got a majority vote. Help me out, because I'm.
I'm trying to remember that the lady that kept talking about accountability. She was talking about accountability in the, I think she was talking about vouchers. But her argument was not on the wrong end, I'll say that. There really wasn't a lot. I mean, it was very, it was very mellow. It just kind of did their elections. Everybody voted on who they wanted. They had a couple of their their legislative topics, and that was it. So for my first go, it was like really unexciting.
I think by way of sort of educating the public in the community, people should be aware that vouchers, education, savings account, and school choice really are all synonyms. And so just because a particular legislator is not talking about vouchers doesn't mean that's not what's happening. So when you hear the words education savings account, it's voucher. You hear school choice, voucher. And just be aware of that, and if we can get that out to our community, I think that would be good.
Thank you. So now our next item is the Board Equity Committee update, and I will turn it over to trustee Adams.
Thank you, President Durant. Board Equity Committee did not meet this past month. We've had some folks under the weather, we've got some folks traveling, and so we will be able to come to you with something next month.
Thank you. So our next item is the Board Community Engagement Committee update. And I'll now recognize trustee Kelly P. Hodges.
Thank you, Madam President. The, our theme for this year for the Community Engagement Committee is to inform, educate, and advocate. So the, as you are aware, the Community Engagement Committee, we are, we will partner with the district and key stakeholders to develop and implement opportunities to improve communication and awareness between the district, parents, and the community. So we activate this using community surveys, public forums, workshops, and special events. And we had quite a robust time last year, or the beginning, January through May. And then also this year, we've had a couple of events as well. So now coming up on our building bridges with the board, the series of community outreach meetings that we facilitated by, that are facilitated by us was launched to increase community engagement with our elected trustees, which is us. So we will have our first event, excited about that, on October the thirtieth. So please make sure that you sign up. We have, if you miss October thirtieth, you'll have an opportunity on Thursday, November the sixteenth. October thirtieth is a Monday, and then Thursday, November the sixteenth, we'll have another session. So we're really looking forward to that. And then table talks, if you recall, was launched to increase engagement and encourage dialogue between the board and campus and district staff members. So we're gearing back up for that. Our first table talk will be held Monday, December the fourth. So we're encouraging staff, district staff members to sign up for that as well. Also, when we met in September, the committee agreed to expand and add three principals and two additional community members. So we're working on that, excited about having those additions to the committee. And then this year, as I mentioned, we're going to focus on voter education and engagement. And we have applied for a grant with the Houston Endowment to fund a voter education program to educate both students and families on the importance of voting, as well as the election process. So we're really excited about everything that we have going on. I really want to encourage the community to get out and vote. I think the last day to register has passed, I think it was October tenth. But if you are registered to vote, go online, learn about your candidates, as my colleague mentioned. Know, know those words that are mentioned about education savings, vouchers, school choice, because, you know, these are things that definitely are going to impact independent school districts throughout the state of Texas. And that's the end of my report, Madam President. Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Thank you. Any questions for trustee Hodges?
May I ask, what was the percentage of voting, voting in our area? Was that the small, it was like eight, seventeen percent or eighteen percent?
I'm not sure, but it was, it was small, it was a small number. I can pull it up for you.
My point, I would say historically, when we canvass our elections and everything in the area, it is very low, like eighteen to twenty-five.
Yeah, and I just wanted to, to.
We don't vote.
Right, right. I just want to get that out there. We historically don't vote in this community. So if we want change, we need to get out there, and we need to get to the polls, so.
I will say, I think it's like in the sixties nationwide. We're definitely below, below the average. All right, thank you. Our next item is the Consent Agenda, and so I'll now entertain a motion to approve and adopt all of the items listed on tonight's Consent Agenda.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the Consent Agenda.
I second the motion.
It's been moved by trustee McDaniel and seconded by trustee Jensen that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on tonight's Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Okay, the Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Section five-five-one dot zero seven one, five-five-one dot zero seven two, five-five-one dot zero seven four, five-five-one dot zero seven six, and five-five-one oh eight two one. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Our action, the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in the closed meeting, will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. The time is now nine thirty P M. We will now reconvene and resume the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. The time is now ten fifty-two P M. Will now address any items discussed during closed session. Are there any motions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting of the Spring ISD Board of Trustees.
Second, it's been moved by trustee Hodges and seconded by trustee McDaniel to adjourn tonight's Board of Trustees meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Tonight's meeting adjourns at ten fifty-three. Motion carries unanimously. Tonight's meeting adjourns at ten fifty-three. P M.